2020, this is the Acushnet Planning Board. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Missing tonight, Phil Mellem and Mark De Silva. Sorry, guys. With that, this meeting is being Zoomed, audio and videotaped, per Mass General Law. We're doing pretty good. It's 6:35-ish. We don't have to wait till 6:45 for this public hearing, do we? Continuation? Gentlemen, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the minutes from October 22nd, 2020.
I did. I would make a motion. We accept the minutes as typed.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No vouchers, no mail? With that, Rick, did you have an opportunity to get those papers and sign them?
They are signed. I signed them, and I double-checked to make sure I signed every last page of it, so they're all set to go.
Nice job, Rick. Thank you. What are you laughing at, Brian? You laughing at Rick?
Thank you very much.
You gotta laugh.
That's right.
Now, I will say that I think that is the third time we've approved that same solar array. I would entertain a motion to not accept any more proposals on that lot. They've gotta figure out how to either do it or not do it.
Well, I think...
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. It's just...
Nope. Listen, every two years they have to do it. Ever Source won't let them hook in.
I understand.
With that, we're close enough. 6:40, public hearing continuation proposed subdivision 148 Peckham Road. Joshua Ruda of Acushnet Mass, applicant represented by John Romanelli of Zenith Land Surveyors, Lakeville, Mass. This proposal is for a three-lot subdivision on a single-access street. Are they here? I am under the assumption this will be continued, or do you want to speak, Mr. Romanelli?
We'd like to open the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Say it once again, please.
We'd like to open the hearing.
Well, I will ask for open the public hearing or continuation of the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing for 166 Main Street and 17 Wing Road.
Nope, we're not on that one. We're on 148 Peckham Road.
Proposed subdivision at 148 Peckham Road. That's the one you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would make a motion that we open the public hearing for 148 Peckham Road.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Mr. Romanelli or Mr. Bissonnet?
We're gonna tag team this a little bit, but let me just first start by saying that we did get this approved as a common driveway back in June of 2018. And we've been struggling ever since to get three bollards out of this. Mr. Merritt, the building inspector, has got an interpretation of a bylaw that we've been trying to jump through hoops to get that changed. And I know Henry Young went to the selectmen a couple of weeks ago and tried to get the zoning change on the town warrant for the next town meeting, which I believe is a Saturday, but that got shot down. That being said, we now would like to go back with our second option, again, coming from comments from Jim Merritt, saying, "Why don't we go back to the planning board and try to get a Form C with a list of waivers to get the three bollards? Then we're not dealing with the 150 feet off the common driveway with the dwelling." So that's basically what we are opening up tonight is to come back with a Form C subdivision with a list of waivers.
Want to talk about that, Henry? unmute me.
John?
Go ahead, Henry. Sorry.
There you go, Henry.
Yeah. Good evening, John.
Good evening.
So if the intent is to, you know, sort of reactivate this, do you have the plans that you could, we could do share screen, and you could kind of take us through it one more time, and then if you're prepared to, you could provide, at this point, for the members of the board, an overview of the waivers that you're seeking?
Sure. We'll put it up on the screen.
All right. Good evening. Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. What John has prepared here is essentially the overlay of the common driveway layout, the majority of which has already been constructed, but with a Form C lot line right-of-way layout. The first thing I want to start out with and really emphasize is, we intend this right-of-way and this roadway to be private. We don't expect it to have any burden on the town at all. The maintenance will be set up through either a common roadway maintenance agreement or a condominium association for the maintenance and operation of the drainage in the roadway. That being said, what this does is this 50-foot right-of-way comes down to the back, and we have a hammerhead, which has primarily already been constructed, for the most part. This would provide us with the frontage for the three lots that were created with the common driveway and form a special permit application that's been approved. We've been in front of conservation and received approval for this work already, and we were more than happy to go over stormwater, which I've already been over with the board prior to when they approved the common driveway, or we can go right onto waivers and discuss that as well.
Is this the exact same plan that was approved under the common driveway?
Not exact, but the grading and the design of the drainage in the roadway, yes, Rick, that is the case.
But what's the basic differences between old one and new one?
It is basically the lot lines themselves. So the lot lines and the process, obviously, going from the special permit with the common driveway to a Form C subdivision. So for example, on our last plan...
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
That where before the common driveway was part of somebody's lot or lots, now it is not.
Correct. That is correct. Yep. So I guess I can go over the drainage relatively quick for you. There's an upland on the high side and the low side, and there's also the road up in here, Peckham Road, kind of flows down towards this wetland area. What we're looking to do is catch the runoff with a swale, put it into a four-bay, and put it over into an infiltration-style basin. As we go back, we have a wetland crossing that has already been installed with a box culvert. And then back, as we go further along, we go from, we go from super, we go to a super-elevated-style roadway, and we pitch into this detention area with a level spreader. A lot of the drainage flow is coming from this side of the road and pitching down. And so what we're doing is we're picking up that flow and carrying it underneath the roadway via culverts at this point here and this point here. And then in the back, we also have another small crossing in this vicinity, again, that have already been permitted through conservation, where we have culverts as well. Our wetland replication for those impacts is in this vicinity right here. So going over the waivers, we have the majority of them listed here, but we went through the regulations again and found a couple that are not on this plan that I'd like to review tonight. We're looking for a waiver from Section 302-F. 302-F has to do with the radii out in this vicinity here. It talks about providing a 30-foot paved radii. We are showing 20-foot paved radii up in this area here, so we're asking for a waiver from that requirement. The dead-end length we're asking for a waiver from, we're not, and also cul-de-sac. We're providing a hammerhead style. This is what was approved on the common driveway application. And like I said, the majority of this is already constructed, gravelled, and built. So we're asking for a waiver to be able to utilize this. This allows for emergency vehicle access to be able to turn around without having to back up down the roadway. We are looking for a waiver from the planting strip on the sides of the roadway. There will be no sidewalks, as we're asking for a waiver from that as well. But the planting strip, we are planting on the side. It's just gonna be different than what the cross-section and the details and the appendices say in the subdivision regulations. The typical roadway cross-section we're asking a waiver from, and the reason for that is several things. One is it shows pavement where gravel, it's already constructed gravel. It's for three houses. Gravel under the common driveway was acceptable, and we're hoping for the same thing. But also, in the area over in here, we're super-elevating the road, and by super-elevating it, it allows us to pitch from the right side to the left. And so therefore, it doesn't meet the standard of the cross-section in the appendices. The 403 for the street and related construction standards, as we've previously mentioned, this is already mostly built. It was built, you know, under the common driveway with the special permit that was previously issued. So, you know, it's pretty hard to go back and rip this up and reconstruct it. It's been built. It's been built well. I've driven on it myself. But again, we're requesting that waiver. The tuminous curbing, we're asking for a waiver from that. As we're going with a gravel road, our drainage operates in more of a cross-country style. Curbing is not needed for that style of drainage, and so we respectfully ask for a waiver from that. On Section 403, we also, beyond our plan, we also have... Let me see. I'm sorry, 406. We also have a couple of additional waivers in that section, which is for the storm drain. We're looking for a waiver from Section A, which is the street shall be shaped to a crowned cross-section. Again, I think it's redundant with the profile, but we want to be thorough, make sure that we're very upfront. And also, C, saying that storm drains, culverts, conduits shall be reinforced concrete pipe and shall not be less than 12 inches in diameter. I believe that we used RCP pipe. I'm sorry, not RCP. We used HDPE pipe on this project as part of the original design. And there's also D that says that we should have no more than 36, I'm sorry, no less than 36 inches of cover over any of the pipes. With HDPE pipe, 12 inches exceeds an H20 requirement. I believe there are some areas where we do have less than three feet of cover over the pipes, so we respectfully ask for a waiver from that. We're also looking for a waiver from the street trees. This, the entire left-hand side of this going down is heavily wooded. It's actually very beautiful. And the trees come relatively close to the road, maybe 20 feet off. This being a wetland over in here will not be impacted, so it'll stay forested in perpetuity. And then looking through a couple more, our plan does not have a profile. Our profile was on the common driveway plans. The profile would be the exact same as on this plan here. Just wasn't carried over from the common driveway plan to the Form C submittal. So we would ask either to be able to reference to the common driveway profile or seek a waiver. This plan doesn't show proposed monuments, even though we will be providing them. We would be happy to update our plan and show proposed monuments as required on the Form C. And also, the names of abutters. On this plan, we're showing maps and lots, not the now-in-formalies. We would update this plan also to have now-in-formalies with the abutters name on there in accordance with the regulations. The last thing that I wanted to address was the slope. Common driveways allow for up to a 10% grade. The minor streets or access streets have a maximum of 7%. When this was permitted and constructed, it runs somewhere around 8.3% to 8.5% for this front section, and then after that, runs between 1% and 2% for the majority of it. We would ask for a waiver from the 7% maximum to a 9% maximum. And where the road is super-elevated in this area, it's pitching from right to left. We would also seek for clarification, either a note about that or a waiver from 1% to 0% going, you know, north and south, I believe. So that's it for our waivers and our presentation, and be happy to try to answer any questions or go over anything with this project that we can.
Gentlemen, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Brian or Rick, do you have any questions?
I would think on the profile plan, we could make that as an attachment to this one for profile purposes only.
Okay.
That way, it's part of the submission. I mean, in terms of the waivers requested, to me, it's the same thing that we approved under a common driveway. I mean, I don't, there's nothing that jumps out to me that says, "No, we shouldn't do this," or... I'm pretty happy with the way it is. I would, at another time, just this kind of a work session, I'd like to sit down with Henry and all of us and kind of go over what the problem was with the interpretation of the bylaw. To me, the whole intent of this common driveway was to have less town-maintained, owned, and owned roads in town to cut down on the maintenance expense for our public works. I just would, I want to explore the proper way to, you know, to arrange the bylaws so it makes it conducive to doing that. That was one of the big reasons for, one of the reasons for the common driveway bylaw in the first place, is to not have all these dead ends in town that the town was responsible to maintain and ultimately own. That's really all I've got to say. I mean, so we do the Form C, we've got to do the abutter notification, we've got to do the advertising and all that stuff. Henry, is that correct?
Yep. This is a continuation of a public hearing, so it's been a while, but Jamie or John, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Confirmation that that abutters list, you know, is still, you know, accurate? But this is, there's already been an initial abutters notification.
Yeah, but the thing is, though, Henry, on this, I mean, anybody who was notified way back when didn't know that this proposal was going to reappear at this time. You know, I mean, that's kind of the whole idea. Whoever's interested shows up, and then they are made aware of every continuance. I don't think there was any formal continuance for this subdivision for anybody who may or may not have been interested.
So you would like to have another abutters notification?
I would, you know, a re-notification, if you want to call it that. We get accused of not notifying the abutters enough as it is.
Can I just mention something? If, I'm sorry, I'm one of the owners of 148 Peckham Road. My name is Doris Ruda, for the record. Everyone has been notified. This has been continued on and on, and it's really been such a nuisance and really an inconvenience for our family. We have spent thousands and thousands of dollars to be able to get to this point, and I feel like everyone who has needed to be notified has most certainly been notified to the utmost point that they've needed to be notified for. There was an issue at one point where someone had mentioned they had never been notified. Well, we went through hoops to be able to notify them again. So I'm sorry, but I have to say, everyone has been notified, and I would really appreciate that this be voted on today.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm all set, Mark.
Henry? Nope, we're with you 100%. We thought this was a done deal and...
Excuse me. I'm an abutter. I'd like to speak.
And your name, please, ma'am?
Donna Lopes.
And your address, please?
178 Peckham Road.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I'm not an engineer, but I did read the Acushnet subdivision rules and regulations to try to figure out what these waivers were that were being requested, but this plan is not very clear. I'll provide details. I spoke to some other engineers that I know, and they said they typically will state what the requirement is and what's being asked for to be waived, and I don't see that on this plan, so is that something that could be added? Also, I don't understand why they can't do some of these things they're asking for for a waiver. Like, given the fact they're requesting to reduce the road size by six feet, I would think they should be at least required to pave the road. I don't understand why that's a problem. There's no sidewalks, no planting strips or trees. At a minimum, they should be able to meet the requirement for trees. And I don't see on the plan that is indicated that it's a private road. That should be put on the plan as well. And as an abutter, safety is a very big concern. And Article 3, Section 305, states that for firefighting and public safety reasons, dead-end or cul-de-sac streets shall not exceed 1,000 feet. If that has been determined to be the maximum for safety reasons, why would the town want to deviate from this when that has been the requirement for so many years? And I spoke to Kevin Gallagher with the fire department about a month or so ago, and he said he has not approved this subdivision plan. And he also said that he has a standing order with the planning board that subdivisions must comply with the rules and regulations for the width of the road, turnaround radius, and water access. And this plan doesn't comply with the road width or the turnaround radius, and I don't see any water access on the plan. And I understand you might want to help Mr. Ruda get this through because, you know, it's been a hardship, but he created his own problem by not doing his due diligence and getting all the necessary approvals before putting in his common driveway. And I don't know if any of you have been out to the site. I have a photo, if you want me to share it, but this is a gravel driveway. It's not a subdivision road. Even if it's widened a few feet, it is still a gravel driveway and does not look like any of the other of the approved subdivisions in the town or have the same aesthetics. And if this is approved, the board's going to set a precedent that would allow anyone else to get the same waivers. You have, if this is passed, I also have spoken to several people about this project, and there are many people waiting for the outcome of this proposal. Some have even told me not to dispute this because it would make it easier for everyone else in town to build. So should you approve, should you choose to approve this, there should be a condition that there's no further subdivision of any lot shown on the plan permitted. And if you do decide to approve this and allow him to circumvent the minimum standards governing the Form C subdivisions established by the town for so many years to preserve the character of Acushnet, this will give others the opportunity to do the same. And I sincerely hope you'll do the right thing for the town, so we don't end up with an explosion of growth that does not meet the subdivision rules and regulations.
Are you all set, ma'am?
Yes.
I think with this case being brought up, maybe what we should do, guys, is do a walkabout. Go down, take a walk around, take a look at everything. I know this originally started as a common driveway and now turning into a Form C. So with this, I would entertain a motion to have a walkabout, so we can walk about everything, and Jamie or John can be there with, I guess, a new set of plans, and we can go from there. I don't know if that's acceptable to you, gentlemen on the board?
I just don't understand why this has to be gone through again. People have visited this site so many times. All we want to do is approve, improve the area. If you see some of the houses that are around us, just within a couple of feet of us, they are disgusting. We're trying to add value to the town of Acushnet. I don't understand what Ms. Lopes has against us, but she is the only person that has a problem with this. We have done nothing, nothing but work hard and try to improve and try to add value. This is only going to make your house value go up. We would never make anything look like trash. So I'm sorry. I'm taking this very personally, and this is just above and beyond what it needs to be. And I have never spoken up, and I will not settle until it is. My son wasn't even born yet. My boy is almost three years old, and we have been fighting for this since before that. We have fought tooth and nail, and the only person that has ever had an issue with this is Ms. Lopes.
Well, I am a direct abutter, and I have nothing against people building in the town at all.
I'm sorry. This is very personal.
Ladies, ladies.
Let me finish. I don't have anything...
Oh, one second. One person at a time, please, number one. Please talk nice and easy and slow so we can understand it.
I have nothing against...
Wait a minute. I'm not done talking yet.
Okay.
We've had this project on for many, many years. We've approved it many times, and it's come back that some of the selectmen or other people didn't want it. We're trying to make this work. You've done a great job on all the plans. I understand both your pros and cons on it. That's why we're here.
Thank you.
This was signed, sealed, and delivered a while back, and now we have some challenges. So now, to give Zenith the opportunity to make this put together, I mean, if you want me to take a vote tonight, I'll take a vote tonight, but I don't think we should do it tonight. I'm saying that if you want, guys, we'll take a walkabout. Rick, if you want to do the abutters list again, we can do the abutters list. But we have had this on the books for many, many years, and it has been approved initially and then disapproved. So we know how both of you feel, but this is our job to make this better for the town.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. I just want to state it. I have nothing against people building. It just, I would like to see it meet the requirements, but there's a lot of waivers being requested here. And this is not a typical Form C subdivision. It doesn't look like any of the southern subdivisions in the town.
You're absolutely correct.
And it would set a precedent for other people to get the same waivers.
I don't have an answer for you.
Well, it doesn't look like a regular...
My name is George De Silva. I'm one of the people buying one of the lots. Just to answer, I guess, Ms. Lopes about, you know, her saying that, you know, the due diligence should have been done as far as all the, I mean, we all know, everyone here who's been involved, including her, knows that this was already approved as it's been designed, as it's been built. Nobody deviated from anything. Nothing was done before approvals. Everything was done as approved. The fact that the approvals changed is not on the fault of the builder. That was on the fault of whatever's... That was on the fault of whatever's going on in the town with disagreements. That's not our fault. Everything was done as approved. Remember that. So she can come here and say due diligence wasn't done. It was. Everything was approved for years before anything was even touched. And as far as the effect on her, it has zero effect. I, I mean, we could, we could have put a lot right behind her house. I mean, we could still do that. Eliminate the other two, do the one and we have direct access to the road. So if she'd rather us do that, we can do that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen on the board, do you have any-
I have a couple of things to say, if you don't mind.
Excuse me?
I have a couple of things to say if, if you don't mind. This is Joshua Aruda, 148 Peckham Road. Gentlemen, I know everybody's been very patient and understanding with this project. Me and my family are trying our best. I know Donna has, you know, issues with the appearance of it. I put granite curbing at the entrance. Beautiful, natural field stone walls. No other subdivision in this town has something like that. Underground utilities. She's asking for street trees when we're wooded lots. Sidewalks for who? For two people that live there? I know some of these waivers we're asking for are, we didn't want to go this route. We wanted to go with the common driveway. But you guys are pushing us into this corner to go with the Form C. Not the planning board itself, but you know, other entities in town. So I just think that everybody should get together and figure out what needs to be done. Whether you guys want a Form C, we'll do it. If you want a common driveway, we'll do it. But, you know, everything was supposed to be done with this bylaw change. Henry has worked very hard on this and we've worked together on this project. Between Henry, Jamie and John, we were all in agreement that this would, you know, solve the problem. So it didn't, so this is the only reason we're going with the Form C. Cause I'd rather not go with the Form C. We'd rather do the common driveway. So the, the, the ball is in your court, guys. If, if you guys want to do a walkthrough, I'm more than welcome. If Donna Lopes would like to join, more than welcome to. I have no issue. I have nothing to hide. I've been trying my best on this project. I'm only one person and we're just trying our best. I know we've been at this for a really long time and
Too long.
This is very, a lot of carelessness on, not on the planning board, but other boards. And yeah, I agree. You know, some subdivisions don't hold up to this. But there aren't many subdivisions in town, per se, that have all these requirements. So I think we should definitely do a walkthrough and tell, tell me what you guys want from me. So we can put this to bed because this is long overdue. I've invested all this money. Infrastructure's in, gas line has been installed, underground utilities are in, all culverts, box drains, everything has been in, is in. Gravel driveway is in, not finished, but it's, you know, to 80%. So at this point, I don't know what you guys want to go with this.
Well, I would certainly make a motion that we schedule a walkthrough to observe the status of the project as it is today. And, and obviously we've got some thinking to do. We do have to word any approval or disapproval in such a manner that it doesn't set a precedent for, you know, gravel driveways all over the rest of the town. But I certainly would like to schedule a walkthrough and, and just see what's been done as of today. Get a good visual before we do anything. I certainly don't intend to vote on anything tonight. There's no question in my mind about that. So I would request again that we schedule a walkthrough, that we continue the public hearing until whatever that date is and go from there.
How sad did they work for you guys?
The only challenge with Saturday is it's a town meeting.
All right.
It would have to be the following Saturday.
Saturday, well, you don't want to do it on a Sunday. Sunday's a day of prayer.
How about days of the week? I know Brian, you, you, you know, a lot of you guys have full-time jobs.
Yep.
And now with the hour change, I know it does get dark early. So it'd have to be probably for like
Looks like the-
Four o'clock, right?
Yeah, or the 21st is a week and two days from today. Saturday, good with you guys? Rick and Brian?
Saturday, fine with me.
Like 10 o'clock?
That's fine.
Fine, so-
Jamie, does that work for you or John?
I can make it happen, yeah.
They will make it. 10 AM, the 21st of November. A walkabout at 148 Peckham. Is there a motion?
I, motion's on the table.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous on 10 AM on the 21st of November, 148 Peckham, we will meet on the road. Thank you, everybody. John?
Thank you, gentlemen.
John and Jamie, you all sitting there?
Yes, sir. We're good with that, Mark.
Okay.
Well, very much.
Thank you all. With that, is there a motion to go from public hearing back into regular hearing?
Motion to go back into a regular, regular meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, where was I here? Get mine and Henry here, you have yours. With that, we're on to 6:55. We're running a little behind time. Public hearing continuation proposed commercial, excuse me, proposed commercial development. 158 Main Street, 166 Main Street, 117 Wing Road and the Wingland Retail Development LLC applicant represented by Patrick McLaughlin, PE. Site plan review approval required. This is a proposal for a 4,200 foot gas station and convenience store with drive-in service within the Business Village District. Do we have anybody from New England Retail?
Mr. Chairman, I received a email from Mr. Lombardo, the counsel for Mr. Higgins and Menland Farms requesting the continuation of this public hearing.
Is there a motion to continue this public hearing till our next meeting?
Motion to continue this public hearing till the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous, continue till the next meeting. Speaking of that, do you have a date for the next meeting, Henry?
We are going to have to advertise the public hearings. We're going to need three weeks.
Three weeks, so one, two, three. It looks like December 10th. You want this?
Is what, December 17th, does that work?
That's good. December 17th, good with everybody for our next meeting?
Sounds fine.
You're not going away, Brian? You don't want to go to the tropics or anything? Okay, we'll make that for December 17th and we will have a time for it when we put it all together. With that.
Excuse me, I, I have a question regarding the last meeting. My name is Joshua DeRoche. I'm one of the butters on, on 168 Main Street, myself and my wife.
Yes, sir.
Just at a curiosity, are we allowed to know the reason why it was asked to delay the meeting or push it back? I know there is a zoning board meeting coming up on the 24th. I'm not sure if that has something to do with it or, or if there, there was another reason. Are, are we privy to that information?
I don't have an answer, but Henry goes-
I mean, to, to be quite honest with you, sir, I mean, they're entitled to ask for a continuation and, and we're entitled to vote on whether we agree to it or not. We have never turned down any applicant for a continuation that I am aware of and I would not intend to turn that down now. I would make the request that we grant, again, we made the motion, we granted his continuation and that, that's pretty much it. You know, when we get a chance to talk to him again, you know, you're certainly welcome to ask him at that time what the reasoning is for it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your answer.
Okay.
I think it is, the Board of Appeals does have a meeting on the 24th. With that, is there a motion to go out of public hearing and go back into open session?
Motion to go out of public hearing for the New England Farm proposal and back into our normal meeting.
I second that.
All in favor? Unanimous. 7:15, we're doing pretty good. Back into a public hearing, common driveway off Main Street. Continuation, M1H1 LLC of Dartmouth Math, applicant represented by Christine, Christian Fallon, PE of Fallon Corporation of Dartmouth, a special permit is required. Is there a motion to go from regular hearing back into public hearing?
Motion to go into public hearing on the common driveway application from Main Street as represented by the Carter Corporation.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous. With that, do we have anybody from Fallon Corporation of Dartmouth?
Yes, this is Jack Demarest from Fallon Corp. We're here requesting a special permit applicant, a special permit for the common drive at lots 5.4, 5.5, 5.6 on map three off of Main Street. At the last public hearing, we proposed a common drive to minimize the disturbance of the natural vegetation and to minimize confusion of having three driveways so close together. I don't believe there were any objections to the plan at the last hearing and you wanted us to coordinate with the fire chief for his input. He suggested we incorporate an emergency vehicle turnaround at the end of the drive to accommodate any of the vehicles in his fleet. On the plan, let me pull that up for you.
I believe that was the last thing that you just had, something that the chief wanted. Is that correct?
Correct. And we submitted this plan to him yesterday and he had no objections. We provided an 18-foot wide gravel drive with a 62-foot, almost 63 feet deep on drive here with a 25-foot radius on each side. And he said that that's more than enough to accommodate his needs. So he said that, he said it's good. I'll try to answer any of your questions.
Gentlemen on the board, do you have any questions?
Henry, have you heard any other comments from our, our town, our town boards or departments?
No, I was wondering, Jack, if you-
Jack, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering if you'd received any feedback from the Department of Public Works. I know there was some interest in the construction of the drainage swale which you had, which shows on the map here.
I have not received any comments or emails regarding any of the drainage swales. But we did design it to accommodate the town of Acushnet's standards.
Do you have a, any kind of a cross-section of the drainage swell or more information on the construction of it and the materials?
We have a cross-section here with the existing grade, low seed on the sides with a 3:1 max slope. The slope of the swale reaching to the right where the grass whale is and also another 3:1 slope going down.
Okay, but in the drainage swell, do you have any kind of a rip wrap or, you know, trying to look at the-
This is all, it's going to be a vegetated swale along the side here. And it's going to go right into this little, I don't want to say, landing area. We go underneath this proposed driveway and into this larger basin. And there's an overflow that would go towards this way if it ever need to, but we don't anticipate that ever being a thing because it's, 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 it's overdesigned.
Well, I would, I would, in concert with what Henry said, I would make the suggestion that maybe we incorporate swale itself into the cross-section.
Okay.
All right, so there's no question about what it should look like when it-
Absolutely.
And, and as you do that, Jack, if I would suggest you, thanks to Dan Menard, Director of DPW.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
If you could touch bases with Dan Menard, the Director of the DPW.
Okay.
Give him the courtesy of-
Okay.
Other than that, gentlemen, everything look okay?
No, I'm, I, I mean, I would, I would at this point make a motion that we approve the special permit as submitted with the addition of the swale to the, to the typical roadway cross-section. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
And can, can we add to that, Rick, you know, to the approval of the DPW?
Do you hear that one, Rick?
Yeah, I did. I, I mean, if you, I suppose it's going to go to the next, to the next meeting anyway, just to add that section to it. Sure, sure. As subject to the approval of the, of the DPW also. And the addition of the, of the swale to the typical roadway cross-section. I would make a motion that we approve it as such.
Yes, what, what, what the condition of approval for tonight would be revised plans with the additional swell and approval through DPW?
Yes.
Perfect.
Is there a second?
I don't know, I guess I got to ask something here.
You're entitled. Go right ahead.
I guess, I'm trying to figure out what's the difference between this common drive and the one on Peckham Road? Because the one on Peckham Road couldn't be within 150 feet of a dwelling. So what, what, why is this one here different? Because they have frontage? On the road?
I believe so. And our next closest of butters is about 150 to 200 feet away.
Okay. Okay, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at. What, where would the next nearest house be?
Yeah, um, there is, this is like a 50-foot, 60-foot section. This is another 60-foot section. And the next house is another, another 100 feet on each side.
Okay. Okay.
One, one other real critical difference is, is if he doesn't do the common driveway, then there's a driveway, a driveway on each lot and a driveway even closer to the butters.
Right. And, and, and I get that, but I was just trying to get in my mind, what is the difference? It would still have to be 150 feet away from the nearest house, correct?
The, I'd be quite honest with you, I, I don't really understand the interpretation that the building inspector is making. I really, I really do want an opportunity to sit down with Henry and so that I understand the thing.
Okay, this is where my confusion is now because now I'm looking distant going, well, aren't we, aren't we getting back into the same thing again?
Yes, I, I, I think we do need to have a, a sit-down with the building inspector.
Because now you're going to say houses are going to have to be built 150 feet away from that road.
I think we may still get into the same interpretation issue until-
Yes.
So, we, there's a motion made. You wanna make a second? I'll make a second.
All right, I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, three votes for it. As long as you get the okay from the chiefs, and we will sit down with Henry and Rick and the building inspector or, and Brian for total interpretation.
Yeah, because we really need clarification on this, because now we're all...
We certainly, I understand, Brian, we certainly don't want to get anybody in a position where they spend tens of thousands of dollars and, you know, for nothing. They, they really should know that at a time, before they spend the money. I, I'm all, I'm all in concert on that one, and that's again why I really wanna sit down with Henry and the building inspector if necessary, and, and look at that, that bylaw. I don't understand it myself.
And the same thing that was brought up by Ms. Lopes in, in the previous one, you know, what are other people gonna start thinking? Because we're not being consistent about what we're doing here.
I understand.
Okay.
Have we all said on that?
Can you see it, huh?
Yeah, good now.
Okay, who, do we have a young child, someone? Brian, you got, you got kids, Brian, now? That's okay, so, Jack.
Oh, you need to mute, yeah.
Do you understand where we're coming from, Jack?
Yeah, so, just so I'm clear, we have a condition of approval as long as I meet with the Dan Menard from DPW to get his approval with the swell and show the swell on the plan.
Correct.
All right, I can definitely do that.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to come out of public hearing and go back into open session?
Motion to go back into open session.
There's a second. Second, Brian? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Brian, second? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Being 7:30 on the piano, we're doing good, A&R Lot at 88 Mill Road for Seth DeRoche, applicant. STG Holdings LLC, book 13471, page 295, represented by John Rominelli of Zenith Land.
Yeah, well, you don't have to, I can see it just through this.
Good evening again, gentlemen. I am here.
The floor is yours, sir.
Can everybody see the shared screen?
Guys, can you see it?
I can.
Yes, we all can see it.
Can't see it, can you close this down? Got it, got it. I'm learning, I'm learning.
Welcome to Zoom.
All right, gentlemen, what we are doing here is creating an A&R, a lot of proven are required. There's an existing dwelling at 88 Mill Road. Seth DeRoche recently purchased this property which was made up of five different parcels. I did try to show the dashlines, if you look at the assessors map, so is the interior parcel lines that were created by the deed. And what Seth has asked me to do is create a buildable lot, I'm calling it new lot 20, 20, I'm sorry, 46M, map 24, it's 61,330 square feet, it's all upland, there are no wetlands out here. The remaining house lot at 88 will still have 60,366 square feet all upland again. It is a pre-existing non-conforming house lot because the house, I did put a distance, there's literally like two feet off the lot line to the neighbor next door on lot 47. But it does conform, it has the frontage, has the area. The second lot we are creating has frontage on Clara Street, which is a 40-foot-wide public road. Seth did have a conversation with Mr. Merritt, the building inspector, and said that he would have to expand on that gravel road and talk to the fire chief and whatnot as to what he's gonna have to do to get actual permit for that lot. But there is a house on lot 45 that does use Clara Street as access. And I am showing, as part of the deed that when Seth purchased it, it also includes this lot on Victor Street and Clara Street. It's an undersized lot, he's gonna try to combine those at some point. And again, he's had some conversation with Jim Merritt about that being a grandfather lot, but I'm not 100% sure on that just yet. But I just wanted to show that as part of the whole deed when he purchased it. It does include that parcel of land on Victor and Clara Street there on 40, 46F and 46E. Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward, if anybody's had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Brian, you said that was a public, but it says it's a private.
Clara is a private way, 40 feet wide. Yeah, it's a gravel road, there is access to the house at lot 43 currently, they do use that.
Lot 43 or, or lot 45?
I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. I guess it's 45. Sorry about that, yes, the house on the, the lot on the left frame where it says, private 40-foot-wide road, there is a house there. Anybody else?
At Clara, how far down is it accepted?
It's actually, it's a private way mark, it's not accepted as if the town does not maintain it. It's pre-existing subdivision control law. So, he will have to improve at least to where the dwelling is gonna be proposed on 46M.
That was my question.
Now, is that, is that our decision, or is that the building inspector's decision?
That would be the building inspector's decision.
So, how far you would want the road to go from Middle Road down to lot 46M, is that what we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
And it currently goes down, we did locate it, that is the edge of the gravel road going down there, and then it kinda hooks left into the driveway to the house at lot 45. So, he'd probably have to extend it at least another 150 feet.
Okay, I understand that.
Yes, yeah, he did have a sit-down meeting with Mr. Merritt before he purchased it.
No. If I get this, he's also making lot 46F, is that, do I have that right? Of Victor Street?
No, that is, that's the way it exists right now, but that is part of the, the five parcels that he bought, that's also included in it. He's gonna have to have a sit-down meeting again and further with, with Jim Merritt. There's two separate lots there, you can see the interior lot line, if you look at the assessors map, that's the way that cuts through right there. It's showing as two separate parcels, not buildable in its current state.
There is another house down at the, I'll call it the end of Victor Street, I don't know where the actual limit of the layout is, but is that on map 24 lot 40, is that house on that lot, or is there yet another lot?
It's on lot, it's on lot 40, yes, there is a house on lot 40. I believe Jim had mentioned something about it predating 1973 zoning, and if it was over 30,000 square feet that he possibly could get a permit to build on that. I'm unsure.
So, I guess what you're asking us is if we're okay with this, as long as the gentleman?
I, I've gotta say, I'm confused again, you know, we, I mean, didn't we just process a couple of things on the, on the other end of town where we had to make some decisions on roadway construction to provide access to, you know, some of these back lots? I, I'm unclear as to what the distinction between what we did on the south end of town and, you know, what's being asked here. That's all, I'm unclear once again.
I believe, I believe what John's saying is, everything is up to the zoning enforcement officer, Jim Merritt, who's our building inspector, as far as how far Clara, Clara Street has to be improved, is that correct, John?
That is correct, yes.
Right, and I would make a motion that we approve the plan, subject to a note on the plan that the buildability of new lot 46M and lot 46F would have to comply with the applicable Acushnet dwelling bylaws, period.
That can be done.
That, that basically says right out front that it's the building inspector that's gonna make that determination.
Is lot 46L also on this, John?
Well, 46L's got frontage on Mill Road.
Correct, which is a public way.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's, shouldn't really...
So, that one's all set, we're just concerned with 46M and...
46F. It's actually would be the combination of lots 46F and 45 or 46E, I can't tell whether it's a five or six.
I have 46E.
Okay.
So, the determination has to be made by Jim Merritt, the building inspector, is that what we're up against, John?
Yes, and I can add a note to the plan.
That, that would be good. Henry, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm looking for, what is the length of this? And I know you haven't determined it yet, but what would be the minimum length? Because I'm thinking about turnarounds for fire EMS.
I was assuming he was gonna extend the gravel road of Clara Street about 150 feet.
From Mill Road or?
No, from, from where it currently is, right where the private is on the drawing is where the...
Okay, that's where it ends, right there, under the...
That turns into that lot.
Correct.
You know, to Rick's point, you know, in the south end of town, we had, you know, we had a conversation about turnarounds at the end of these roads.
Dead-end roads.
Yeah. So, I see that as a missing element.
And what's map 24 lot 46K, is that, that's nothing to do with this, is that correct, John?
That is correct, that's a different order.
And the other part belongs to the Coalition for Buzzards Bay, so I don't think they wanna turn around in there.
No.
So, it would have to be somewhere down in the area of that former parcel line?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, put in a little hammer, turn around at the end there.
Right in that vicinity?
Yep.
So, what is our motion on this?
Motion to approve the plan, subject to a note on the plan that the building inspector will make the determination of compliance with the zoning bylaw for lot 46M and the combination of lots 46F and 46E.
Which will still be a private road, Clara will still be a private road, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, subject to those changes, John?
I will get you 10 fresh copies with the note added on it early next week.
Okay, though. With that, oh, we're still in regular hearing, sorry. We don't have to go into another public hearing. 7:45, A&R for lot division of 329 Middle Road for Kim and Humberto Natala applicant, Acushnet assessors map, 18 lot 61, represented by John Rominelli of Zenith Land Surveys of New Bedford. The existing property is 8.75 acres, and the applicant seeks to cut out a non-buildable parcel of land approximately 10,000 square feet conveyed to Mark and Jennifer Saucier, who live at 30 Earl Street. Mark and Jennifer Saucier want to expand their backyard, which is currently very shallow. The parcel created would have no frontage, just an upland parcel to add to 30 Earl Street. All yours again, John?
Okay, for the record, John Rominelli, Zenith Land Surveys. What you just stated, Mr. Chairman, is exactly what we are looking to do. I was hired by Mark and Jennifer Saucier, who live at 30 Earl Street on the cul-de-sac. It's very faint, but you can see their house and how close the backyard is to the back of the garage and existing dwelling. They are very friendly with the Humbertos in the backyard and would like to purchase from them a 65 by 250-foot-wide non-buildable parcel to be conveyed to them, so they can expand into their backyard. So, the remaining land of the Humbertos is gonna still remain over seven, I can't, 7.34 acres, I think it says. And I did add a note there, the purpose of the plan is to create that parcel of 12,000... Wow, I really need my glasses, I can't see that.
16,250 feet, John.
Thank you.
That parcel there you're talking about?
Correct, so we're gonna take that out of the farmland, the eight-acre farmland, and add that to, and convey it to the Saucier's property on Earl Street.
So, that will be added to, that's lot 58F, I presume?
Correct.
Looks pretty simple, gentlemen?
I mean, there's no new building lots created here, it's just a reconfiguration of existing lots.
Correct.
I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, me either.
Make a motion, we approve the plan as submitted.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, with that, we don't...
Before we move on, now, John, that was, that was a, a plan that was easy to approve.
Those are the good old days.
Yeah.
Wow.
Those days are gone, more creative engineering. Okay, with that, we, the my laws up above?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can sign the my law on that one?
Yes, you can.
I'll take care of that tonight, John, and you can, I don't know when you wanna pick that up, make, work something out between you and Henry and I, is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Excellent. With that, being 8:00 PM, we're a little behind schedule here. Presentation on potential ground-mounted solar array off Gammons Road and Mata Poisette Road, known as assessors, Acushnet assessors map, nine lot 32, map 10, lots 1, 2, 3, and 1A, 3A of BWC Mill Pond LLC, represented by Richard, CEO, PE, Field Engineering Company in Mata Poisette, Mass. The applicant will be seeking a public hearing in December of 2020. Is there anybody from Mill Pond LLC?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Rich Riccio from Field Engineering. On behalf of BWC Mill Pond, I also have Jackie Firsty, Ted Bacchus, and Josh Larissy from Blue Wave, who's a BWC Mill Pond is a entity from them. I'm gonna share my screen with the plan. That way, we can all be looking at the same thing here.
Go right ahead, sir.
Can everybody see that?
Guys, can you see it okay?
Yep.
Great, so this is a 6.2 megawatt DC array being proposed on a number of parcels of land in the, the town of Acushnet, right along the Mata Poisette Town Line. The access into the site itself would be via an 18-foot-wide gravel access drive off of Long Plain Road in Mata Poisette. We're looking at approximately 24 acres of fenced area that would contain approximately 14,700 panels on the property. The property itself is mainly wooded, it's adjacent to some agricultural use on the north, I guess the northeast corner of the, of the property. I guess the northeast corner of the, of the property. This site is very well screened from any public ways or residences, the nearest house to the array was, is where my hand is right here, and that's about a thousand feet away from the closest panel. The road itself would be about fourteen hundred feet in off of Long Plain Road. The array itself, as you notice, the panels are actually running north, south, as opposed to east, west, which is the typical you've been seeing in the past, these are going to be on a single axis tracker system, so they basically follow, they follow the sun from the morning to the, to the evening, much more efficient setup, then I get, you know, more production over the course of the day. We also have two sets of concrete pads for equipment, transformers and inverters, and we'd also be proposing an energy storage container on the pad, on one of these pads as well, as that's the state through their, their most current program is really encouraging energy storage, which can provide additional power into the grid during cloudy times and overnight. Briefly, the site itself will be maintained, the existing grades across the, across the footprint of the array, there's a, there's a ridge line that runs through the center that sheds runoff in either an easterly or westerly direction towards the wetland systems. We are proposing two detention areas, as shown, one here, and then one down in the southwest corner to attenuate the increase in the rate of runoff from a pre-developed to post-developed conditions. The site would be enclosed with a seven foot high chain link fence, we typically leave that six inches up from the ground to allow wildlife passage through the, through the project, and there's a number of fences, sorry, gates along the fence line to provide access into the facility and also access for operation and maintenance of the detention basin here, and also an additional gate in this location here, in the, in close vicinity to an existing gravel access path, I guess you could call it. Like I said, we're proposing an eighteen foot wide gravel drive all the way to the equipment pads, as we've previously done on other arrays in town, we do have a twenty, minimum twenty foot wide clear path around the perimeter of the array within the fence. Like I said, the access itself is actually through Mata Poisette, we did speak with the planning board in Mata Poisette, the only approval we actually need for the, for the drive in Mata Poisette would be Conservation Commission approval for the, the drive that goes through this wetland system here. We have an order of conditions on the property to clear the vegetation and plant fields, basically from the fifty foot no touch, well, fifty foot buffer zone to the wetland on either side, we will be going back to the Acushnet Conservation Commission to, to modify, receive a new order of conditions for this change in the proposal on the project. With that, I'd take any initial questions the board may have, and we look forward to starting the special permit process.
Gentlemen?
Emergency access, I mean, would they be able to access all the way around this if there was, if there was a problem?
Yes, yeah, and we, what we've done, and we'll put together a truck turning plan that shows they have adequate act turning movements around, around the array to meet their requirements, I did, I have reviewed this plan with Chief Gallagher and also Chief Murray in Mata Poisette, Chief Gallagher in Acushnet. Chief Gallagher basically said they'd be working together with, with the Mata Poisette folks on, you know, response to any, for any emergency issues on the site. The gates themselves will all be equipped with Knox Box apparatus for, for the emergency personnel to be able to get into the property.
Okay.
The pads for, you have two pads for storage or battery storage, is that correct?
There's two sets of equipment pads, both sets would have the transformer or central inverter on them, I believe the energy storage would be located on the pad closest to the, closest to the interconnect.
Roughly how big are those?
Which is the one I have here.
Yep. How big are those pads, sir, roughly?
I can dimension them on the plan, they're, they're probably ten by forty-ish, both of them, at each site, that, and that, that impervious area is included in our stormwater calculations as well for the project, it's really the only true impervious surface on the site.
Where, where is the nearest house in Acushnet? I take it that the houses on the, on the east side are, is that, where's the Mata Poisette line, I guess that's?
Okay, the town line runs right here, north, south, more or less.
So all of?
So this is Mata Poisette on the right.
Okay.
This is Acushnet on the left, I'm going to see if I can zoom into my aerial, give me one second, because I have the aerial that expands a lot further than that on my, on the plan view here. You still seeing the original plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hold.
Take your time.
Okay, if we, let me do this, and then I'll share it again. Okay, so this is an overall aerial, a little zoomed out a little bit more. Can we see that here? This would be the closest, the closest residence in Acushnet, which, if I measure, is about five hundred and fifty feet to the fence line through woods, well, a good portion of that is wooded.
Yep, okay. Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Ryan?
Oh, I'm all set, I'm good.
Let me ask you this, you said there was a dirt road on the Acushnet side to get in there, or a path or something like that?
There's an old, there is a, there's a cop path that the survey has picked up in this, in this location here, just, it's probably an old woods road that was used for, I don't know if it was used for logging out here or what, but it doesn't really, didn't, nothing's come up on that, like the, like rights to that or anything that we've seen to date?
I, I was wondering if the chief wanted something from the Acushnet side rather than running all the way to Mata Poisette, but if he's all set with what he has there, we're fine with it.
Yeah, he, he had mentioned, he, I mean, he'd likely, he'd be working with the town Mata Poisette on any kind of response, the dispatches would be most likely from Mata Poisette calls, he commented about water, availability of water, there is a hydrant, basically where my hand is here, at the corner of Long Plain and Wolf Island, that he said would be, provide sufficient water, he just wanted to make sure he had Knox Box access and also the adequate drive width onto the site.
Henry, any questions?
We just need to set up the public hearing.
Okay, with that, we still need three weeks, right? So is there a motion to set up a public hearing for?
December seventeenth.
December seventeenth. So moved. Excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, with that, if, Rich, you want to work with Henry, we'll set up a time for that particular?
Yeah. That's fine, that's not a problem. Henry, I did have one question. We had sent a couple checks into, and they went directly to the town, they were addressed to Mark, but they were, you know, made to the town of Acushnet, do you know if they've come across your desk?
Oh, they haven't come across my desk, but I can check, did you submit them to the clerks, or?
They, they just got sent in FedEx from, from Blue Wave directly to the town of Acushnet, but it said attention, Mark Sennazario, as the chair of the planning board.
Well, we'll have to go up and look.
Yeah, it wasn't in the mailbox.
It was?
No.
All right, I'll forward you the information that, with the receipt that we got, who signed for it.
Okay, thank you.
That would be?
And then we can take it from there.
Sounds like a plan.
All set, gentlemen, any more questions? Rich, you all set?
I think so, what, did you set a time for that, or no, work with Henry on the time?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good, then, I'll be in touch with Henry, you know, tomorrow, early next week.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
That's being done, eight fifteen, A and R for six lot plan on three oh one Perry Hill Road for Mark Francis, Francis applicant, represented by David DeVigene. David, are you out there, or anybody from Schneider, DeVigene, and Leon?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
The floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you, just for the record, I have two screens, one of them, I'm at my computer and I also have an iPad, my computer doesn't have a, the capabilities of video, so I wouldn't be able to speak to you without the iPad, so I'm going to use screen share, and I'm going to first show a plan. See if it pops up.
Now, you have two, you have one at three oh one and one at one twenty, this is the one on three oh one Perry Hill?
Correct, let's start from the beginning, for the record, Dave DeVigene from Schneider, DeVigene, Leoni, and I have Mark Francois with me this evening, he's the owner of the property. We have been before the board a couple of times since the summer to discuss the division of lot twenty-five B on this plan into a six lot and our subdivision, and we presented it back, I believe back in August, and then we awaited town council's review of Mr. Francois's right to upgrade the road across twenty-five A, which is actually owned by his brother, and that seemed to be settled, so we're here this evening to simply ask that the board allow us to upgrade the road and come back in with an A and R plan, because the layout, as you see in this plan, created by G A F Engineering, it predates subdivision control and has existed a long time, I'm going to show you another plan, which is what we're thinking of doing.
Not to interrupt you, Dave, but we never got any of those plans that you had sent in yet.
The plan I'm about to show you, correct, it was just generated, it was just generated and I am having trouble finding where the rest of my files are. Just give me a moment.
Welcome to Zoom, take your time.
Okay. Okay, I got it. So, the, the way has existed, it's an ancient way, and it runs through two properties, and what we're showing on this plan is an A and R plan, which would divide the lot to six lots, lot two has Mr. Francois's home on it, and then there'd be a lot prior to that, lot one, and then the lots continue, three, four, five, six. We've done perk tests on all six, on all the five unbuildable lots already, so we know we have good soils. The existing road that runs through both properties, it ends on, with a cul-de-sac on Trips Way, that was done under definitive subdivision for the development of that lot for one house, and the road starts at Perry Hill Road, currently it's probably about twenty, twenty-two feet wide gravel, in really good shape from Perry Hill until it makes that bend to the right, then narrows down somewhere to about fourteen to sixteen, give or take, and carries right on through the property to Trips Way, and that Trips Way was a gravel cul-de-sac that was already constructed years ago. So what we're looking to do, this is just a conceptual lot division plan, it's consistent with the plan that we did submit for the August discussion, we just tweaked some of the lines based upon some perk tests and something, some input from our client of what he would like to see happen here. We would come back with to you in a month, maybe two months, with a construction plan, but essentially what this plan spells out is that we're proposing to pave, bring the gravel road up to code by taking that gravel, making a pavement twenty foot wide with Cape Cod berms on both sides, so we're talking about twenty feet plus twelve inches on these sides for Cape Cod berms, that would be the upgrade, we would do the best we can with stormwater, you can see there's a detention pond shown on the subtly property line, and, and upgrade the road, and then, then come in with an A and R, you know, plan, or an A and R plan would be subject to the construction of that road, construction plan, similar to what you did on the, the two most recent projects off of Pembroke. So, so this evening, the purpose of this evening's discussion is solely to get a vote by the board that we can proceed with a construction plan for the upgrade of the road, that, and this process would be allowed through an A and R process, which is your, your call, as you discussed at your last hearing for that last project off of Pembroke, and again, we clearly show on this plan, we're not, you know, we're looking to build a road for fire protection, which is twenty feet wide, we're not asking to go less than that, similar to earlier discussions this evening, which I did listen to, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen?
Um, so, so this road, once it's constructed, twenty feet wide, would be providing access only to the six lots that you've got shown there, no additional lot divisions would be requested, is that a correct statement, or are we going to see, you know, all these lots split in half again, and it'd be access to twelve lots instead of six?
Okay, great question, there, it would serve more than six, there would be no further division of this property, because if you look at the lots, although several of them are larger, lot four, a hundred and fourteen thousand square feet, but it only has forty, forty thousand five hundred square feet of upland, so it can't be further subdivided, same thing with lot three, all of the lots would have, you know, be, meet code, but they couldn't further be subdivided anyway, because the upland's just not there, but the road itself would service an existing house on the lot to the south, because they use that driveway now, the gravel road that comes in, and then it also would continue to service Trips Way, which there is one home back there.
That's correct, I, not, my, my question was really directed to the lots on this parcel that's going to be divided up.
It would be limited to six lots, no more.
Okay, okay. You know, I'd be honest with you, I, I don't, off the top of my head, considering the discussion from the lawyer before, and the fact that you guys intend to pave it, I, I don't have any problem off the top of my head, although I would like to go take a walk and see what it looks like.
Okay. We welcome you to the property.
We're not going to have anybody come out with guns and try and shoot you off. I mean, there could be some angry owners around that cul-de-sac that don't want anything more done out there, or a mad brother or something like that.
Well, if we're going to do a walkabout, we got to do a walkabout on November twenty- Well, if we're going to do a walkabout, we got to do a walkabout on November 21st. Do you want to do this at the same time?
I, I would like to. I mean, obviously, it's got to be scheduled for like, you know, maybe 11 o'clock instead of 10 o'clock.
No, do we have one at 10? An hour shouldn't be enough there, and maybe five minutes or 10 minutes to get to Perry Hill. I'm sure David will have coffee and donuts and servings for us there.
Or breakfast.
No, no guns. That's all I have, no guns.
With that, we do a walkabout on November 21st at 11:00 a.m. at 301 Perry Hill Road. And at that time, we could discuss the layout of the roadway, or bring it back to the next meeting, whatever you gentlemen prefer. Glad to see all the, the measurements and everything on this, David, but.
Yeah, I mean, it, for me, it's just, it's a long road, you know, I don't really, I'm not really that familiar with the area. I'd just like to get a good.
How long is that road, David?
Uh, I believe it's 1,280 feet, if I'm not mistaken. There was a waiver granted for that cul-de-sac at the end.
Yep.
And that cul-de-sac, that lot itself cannot be further subdivided, because that was the extension of the way, if you will. And you see.
Is that cul-de-sac there, or just on paper?
It, it was built when they built the house. They, they've only maintained the middle of it, and they've let some weeds grow throughout the circle. So it might not look like it once did, but I saw it when it was all gravelled out back in, I don't know how many years ago it's been now, looks like 2011. So it was built around 2012. And like I said, I, you know, they drive right through it to the house way in the back, and they have not maintained the circle, but it is a, there is a gravel circle there. To answer your question, length of road to the center of the cul-de-sac, 1,324 feet, so there was a waiver total and 1,388 through the ancient way to get that, that, that thing approved.
Yeah, I would just have to check with the fire chief if he wants that made into whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think we should at least take a look at the original approval and, and see if it was up to that owner to, you know, maintain the turnaround for our fire department and police department. So if you could, if you could take a look at that, Henry, and dig up the old approved plan, that would be helpful, I think, when we do our walk-around. And then?
Any other questions? Pro, con, so if they want to speak about it, or against it, or for it, or?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I'd like to be put on the next agenda, because after you walk it, I'd like a formal vote. So before we, we plow ahead with a construction plan and whatnot, we'd like a formal vote that the A&R process would be acceptable.
That's fine. Our next meeting is December 17th. You'll have to get with Henry for the time.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine, absolutely. Thank you.
With this particular situation on 301 Perry Hill, walkabout, November 21st, 11:00 a.m. David's bringing the coffee and donuts. We schedule another meeting after this for the 17th of December, and we will continue on with this. Is there a motion to that effect, gentlemen? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous? Thank you, David. Oh, David, you're up again. Hold on one second. A&R for lot division of 120 Perry Hill, SS's map nine, lot 18A for Perry Hill Cranberry Realty Trust, applicant represented by David DeVignan. All yours, David.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Dave DeVignan from Schneider, DeVignan, Leoni, representing Perry Hill Cranberry Realty Trust. What I have on the screen is a plan that your board approved on April 28th, 2016. This is, if people know Russ DuBois's property, the old farm field. Russ used to live at 100 Perry Hill, which is shown on this plan. He built the house next door on Lot one. This plan carved out the whole field, lots one through five. They'll, Lot three, what you see on the screen, Lot three is the subject of this, the filing tonight, which I'll bring that plan up next. After this plan was submitted, he decided not to develop all the lots at once. So we submitted another plan, which consolidated some of the lots, eliminated some of the lots. So it's sort of been a shell game with creating and removing. And so what we're here this evening is to, I'll now get out of this one and go to the plan submitted. That's not it either. There with me, I don't know.
That's okay. Gentlemen, Rick and Brian, do you have a map of this?
I do not.
What's the, what, which property is it again?
It's 120 Perry Hill.
I, I don't have it.
Was it in your package?
Nope.
Oh, I got one. I have that 120 Perry Hills.
Yep. You didn't have it, Brian?
No, I also didn't have the second page to the agenda either.
Okay, that was probably my fault. I'll take.
Okay.
It's all my fault, Brian.
Don't worry about it, Mark. Can we do a screen share on this, or?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
I mean, the, the plan that's in front of me right now seems to only show a modification of Lot 3A.
Yes, I got up on the screen now.
There we go.
Yep.
Okay, so, so essentially, that was that 2016 plan when we first created Lot three. Then subsequent plans later, we took away Lot three, Lot two, I should say, because two, and then we just consolidate everything with the new house, which is 120. So this lot recreates Lot three. We call it 3A, but it's bigger. You can see it goes into the field more. There's actually a home under construction on it that's just about finished. And so we're essentially taking a piece out of the big piece, which is 75 by 150, adding it to 3A. Since the deed has not transferred for the regular Lot three, we recreated the lot to a larger lot, essentially. So it has 150 feet of frontage, has 15509, and there's the box 150 by 150. And obviously, the lot's plenty deep. It's 488 feet deep. There has, there's an accessory garage in the back that's under construction as well. The septic system's been installed. There's a well on the property. The property's just about finished for development, and it's ready to be transferred over to the new owner, and he's looking to, to make the lot bigger, essentially. So it's a very straightforward plan.
Brian, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything here that looks like it's a big deal. I mean.
Brian, do you see that on the TV?
Well, yeah, I can see it. I can see it.
Basically, we're just doing the lot in the middle that says 3A?
You're enlarging what Lot three used to be. It's now going to be 3A.
That's exactly right. That's all we're doing.
No, it's fine to me.
Rick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I'll make a motion that we approve the plan as submitted.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous with that? Mylar upstairs?
Yes.
I'll have to sign the Mylar. And David, if you coordinate with either myself or Henry, we can have that Mylar up here. I can sign it by myself, correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay. And we can get that put together for you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, you don't need that yesterday, do you?
Nope, not at all.
Okay.
End of the year thing. Although we don't want to wait that long, but.
I don't blame you.
All right, you guys have a good night.
Thank you.
That was a lot, David.
With that, gentlemen, I believe we are almost done. We approved the minutes, vouchers. We didn't have any mail? Any mail, Henry?
No.
And plan or update? Nothing special, or?
We'll be submitted for another share of streets grant, that's on our near-term horizon.
You're very muffled, Henry. I'm having a-
Yeah, he's way away. We can-
So we don't get the echo.
And with that, so our next meeting will be December 17th. We'll get you the times. Town meeting is 10:00 a.m. this Saturday at the school. I don't know how many people would be allowed in there, but we'll have that there. I don't know, we have anything coming up? Nothing at town meeting, right? But just?
Just the-
Yep, okay. With that, anything you gentlemen like to say?
Henry, one thing I'm really struggling with on this, this 150-foot number, that was supposed to be away from a house. I mean, there can be a subdivision road, 26 feet wide sidewalks, and that roadway can be right up against somebody's property line, and, and actually within 25 feet or so of a house. And that road can service 20, 30, 40, 50 homes. That's okay. But a gravel driveway that only services three or four or five homes is not okay. I, I, that's what I'm really struggling with. And that's why I want to sit down and, and talk about it, because-
Absolutely.
It, it just, it just makes no sense at all to me.
You are absolutely correct. It does not make sense. That's why we were trying to eliminate it from the bylaw.
Okay, all right. I, I will, I will go on record as being absolutely opposed to approving or disapproving anything that doesn't pass the common sense rule.
I was snacking there.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye, absolutely. When, when, when I did work with the Mass Highway Department, the, the line was that if you were pitching anything to them, it had to pass the smile test. You know, if, people, if people were on the verge of laughing when you made the proposal, well, then that, that, that would never fly. That wasn't good. You shouldn't even bother to try anything. Oh, well.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to, other than that? Anything else you'd like to say, gentlemen?
All set.
All set.
Right, with that, our next meeting will be, walkabout will be the 21st. Our next meeting will be December 17th. Hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving. Be safe. Wear your masks.